Okay, it is seven fifteen on today and I want to call to order June ninth. I want to call to order the successor agencies regular meeting. If we can have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Bouters.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Here.
And Mayor Pats.
I am here. I'd like to really quickly state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID nineteen state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view this meeting that is being livestream online and on ETV channel twenty seven and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which they can be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at www dot emeryville dot org and clicking on council agendas and videos. Once there you will see a link entitled submitted online speaker card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the raise your hand feature visible on the screen, or if you are calling in by pressing star nine. The Zoom call in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as an email notification. Do we have any ex parte communication?
Oh, if you could do the approval of the final agenda, please.
Oh, sorry, can I get a motion to approve the final agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
A motion by Member Medina, a second by Member Bouters. Please.
Councilmember Bouters.
Hi.
Councilmember Donahue.
Hi.
Councilmember Medina.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Hi.
And Mayor Pats.
Hi. Now is the time for public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to, oh, sorry. Are you cutting me off?
Oh, just to say now we can do ex parte.
Oh, I'm one ahead of you this whole meeting. Ex parte communications, any on the agenda?
No.
Maybe now it's time for public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use your raise your hand feature to visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make comments.
There are no comments at this time.
Great, so do I have a motion for this consent calendar?
I move the consent calendar.
And I will second. And so go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Bouters.
Hi.
Councilmember Donahue.
Hi.
Councilmember Medina.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Hi.
And Mayor Pats.
Hi. We have no action items this meet, this evening, so this meeting stands adjourned at seven eighteen. I'll give the city clerk a moment before I call to order the regular council meeting.
Thank you, and we're all set.
Okay. It is now still seven eighteen. I will call to order the regular city council meeting for June ninth, twenty twenty. We do not need to do roll call as we are all still here, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I have some changes to the agenda, so bear with me as I lay these out. First, the proclamation for Chief Tahara in discussion with her and the city manager. We feel it's more appropriate to do that on Friday with staff only, so we're going to be dropping that from the agenda. Yes, we are going to merge items five into item seven, so the announcements for committee vacancies will be part of the city managers' report. And then I would like to move item twelve point six to before item twelve point one, so we can talk about that early in the evening. That is the grants and really to discuss what happened last week. If that is okay with everybody, I will move approval if I can get a second with those changes.
Second to the motion.
So I have a motion by myself and a second by Member Bouters.
Councilmember Bouters.
Hi.
Councilmember Donahue.
Hi.
Councilmember Medina.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Hi.
And Mayor Pats.
Hi, thank you. Okay, that brings us to item five, announcement of commission, I'm sorry, item six, council members special announcements and reports on meetings attended. I'm going to take a moment here and read a statement I have prepared for this evening and then open it up for you guys to also comment and talk about meetings attended. And then I will discuss the two meetings that I attended. So, as you may know, today was George Floyd's funeral. We considered many ways to mark this, but being this meeting was on Zoom, none felt like they would have the impact we wanted. So we, so I've decided we will stick with the traditional moment of silence, so I will ask the council and staff to join me in a moment of silence for George Floyd. Thank you. Now I want to use my words to thank people for their actions. First, I want to thank Emeryville PD for prioritizing people over property, for following the lead of this council and the outgoing chief. Their actions, as we are seeing, their non-action was action, and we are seeing restraint requires action. So their actions this weekend, this last week saved lives. This is the work Chief Tahara has done to keep our staff current in their trainings. Thank you for not engaging in violence. I was with my colleagues and neighbors as we picked up the pieces and swept up the broken glass. Thank you to those who came out to do that. Most importantly, I want to thank my fellow council members for the work that they have done before this all happened. It was their past acts that will make promises tonight believable. Councilmember Bouters has done more work in criminal justice reform than I can list, so I simply will thank him tonight for his work on bail reform. Member Donahue has served on our public safety committee where he is constantly having us revisit our use of force policy. It is his work on this issue that aligns our policy with the current police reform movements. He can't wait in campaign zero. Putting our ideals into action, Member Medina identified one of the more Emeryville solutions. Interaction with police officers tend to start over minor violations, a busted taillight, expired registration, or no bike light at night. Thanks to Member Medina, EPD now passes out bike lights instead of citations. The war on drugs targeted communities of color. The vice mayor has worked on cannabis reform to repair the damage caused by this failed policy. Her efforts have led to a minority owned cannabis business thriving in Emeryville. Finally, I want to stake, I want to thank our staff for their work and efforts. They have been out in the community to make sure Emeryville stays the city we are all proud of. They even drafted a statement for me to read this evening. It is too beautiful to come from me, but it is too meaningful, truthful, and important for me not to share. Normally, I would thank the author, but in this instance, I think it is best to say these words reflect all of the city leadership and probably the city council. It opens, during this time, no one can stand silent. We stand with our black employees and everyone in our community and across the nation against systemic racism. Our communities are demanding change, and that is deserved and past due. It is time for all leaders to listen and do more to support our black community. We need to do more to support people of color. I want to thank them for those words. We want to grieve with our neighbors. We want to hug our neighbors. We want to collectively cry. We want this to be a just world. We cannot do those things, and it is not a just world. Too many people of color have died because the system is broken. Just like COVID nineteen prevents us from gathering, its disproportionate impact on communities of color show us we have work to do to get closer to being a just world. This is not about me or my feelings, but I'm going to share them. I am still saddened by Emmett Till and Malcolm's murders. I am angry at the lack of justice for Sandra Bland, Oscar Grant, Trevon Martin. I, no we, are angry about too many lives lost in between Emmett and George Floyd. Our country is not over the violent killings of Breonna Taylor and Ahmaud Arbery. I condemn all violence, but tonight is about government sanctioned violence. The state needs to get out of the violence business, be it police militarization or the death penalty, be it war or the torture that is prison isolation cells. I know that this is further than most are comfortable with, but it is what I believe. The government needs to stay out of the violence and killing business. They do not promote public safety. Because I'm against violence, I cannot support the destruction we saw in town. That said, we cannot say protest peacefully, then condemn people when they do. If we do not, if we do not support Colin Kaepernick when he knelt, when his right to kneel was questioned and criticized, then how can we ask people whose families are at risk to be peaceful and ignored? These difficult days have led to changes. Be it charges not just for George Floyd's killer, but for those who failed to act to prevent it. It has led to multiple police officers being fired for breaking the law. It is time for action because we have been here before and we have failed to keep the promises that were made then. We have to do better to end violence, that is racism, and not get lost in the rhetoric of racists that label Black Lives Matter as terrorists and say the defund the police movement wants lawlessness. African Americans are shouting Black Lives Matter because those are the lives that are being lost, be it by violence, the police, or incarceration. When there are calls to defund the police, please understand what that means. It is not a call to lawlessness, but a call to effective practices. More accurately, what it means is look at the data. No one will tell you more police officer means less crime. Stop and frisk programs do not meaningfully reduce crime. Stop and frisk does reduce property values. How can we be okay with searching people while thinking that being required to wear a mask is government overreach? Defend, defund the police says to spend money on things that reduce crime and promote safety. Education, drug treatment, health and mental health care, housing, and fixing, fixing income inequality are those things. I opened with what my colleagues have done tonight because they are going to propose doing more. We will start by scheduling a city council study session, session on this issue. That session will inform what the public safety committee will be doing going forward. We will work with our interim chief, who we will be introducing to you tonight, to help establish a culture for our new chief, building on the work Chief Tahara has already done. We will be looking for input from the community on selecting the right person to lead our police department, a department I am proud of, and I thank for their service and understanding in these difficult days. I will end with the words that were written for me. The City of Emeryville stands with all of its community members, and we will continue to diligently fight for equity and justice for all members of this great city. Thank you for indulging me. Other members, special announcements, or committees attended? Okay. I was fortunate enough today to be at the opening, press conference for the opening of the housing for families at the Robert Savage site. And, you know, we've, I think the quote the newspaper got from me is housing is justice, and that's one of the first places to start. So I'm very proud of the partnership this city has, and it was very proud to be up there and representing them. I want to thank Member Donahue for coming out for that. And then I met this week as the housing committee, and it's my highlight of my year on that. We awarded scholarships to people in the family self sufficiency program, and that was really powerful. And so that was my meetings attended. And thank you. Okay, city managers' report.
Mr. Mayor, I'll defer to the city clerk for the committee vacancy update.
Thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers, nothing much to report tonight. The recruitment period is closed, and you will have seen on your June sixteenth packet that we have applicants that you will meet and appoint at a special meeting on June sixteenth. Thank you.
Okay. Any ex parte communications on items on tonight's agenda? Member Bouters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item twelve point three, I had meetings with various food vendors, vendors from the public market, Prize Fighter Bar, Rudy's Can't Fail Cafe, Trader Vicks, the Doyle Street Cafe, The Bank Club, and Rob Benz. And item twelve point four, I had meetings with the public market and Wareham Development.
Thank you. Member Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You and I met with Chief Hank Schreeter regarding item twelve point five on May twenty seventh.
Thank you. Any other ex parte communications?
Yes, on item twelve point three, I met with Prize Fighter Bar and members of the Public Market Food Court.
Thank you. Okay. Member Donahue, we good to go on?
Yes.
Okay. Now is the time for public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press star nine. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
I have two that came in via online comment card, and there's one raised hand. So I'll go ahead and read these first two and then call on the person with phone and last four digits, one, two, eight, one. Okay, this first one is from Sharice. Hello, on March sixteenth, twenty twenty, when the stay in shelter was announced, by the time I reached across the bridge to San Francisco, thirty percent of my income was gone before midnight. Since then, my business has been going downhill. Alameda County has separated barber shops and fitness studios into separate phases with gyms being behind this phase. There is no evidence that having six people in a barber shop limiting capacity and having four people limited to the fitness studio, that one business is safer than the other. Please provide the scientific evidence because they both take place indoors. If both business types are practicing limiting capacity by appointment only, I'm requesting the city to allow fitness studios an opportunity to open at limited capacity, just like nail salons and barber shops by appointment, giving this business the same fighting chance to rebuild. There has been no scientific evidence that the proposal to separate these phases is going to stop someone from getting COVID nineteen. Fitness gyms not being able to open all of these months have almost no chance of being able to reopen because of being behind in rent or vendor bills. And the amount of time it will take to build the client base up again will take months, even more than a year. The decision that you make more affecting people who invested money after paying expensive city permit fees to enter the City of Emeryville, only to have to walk away from their business investment because the only big name, because only the big name companies can survive. I am asking if the City of Emeryville will take a look at, at an open discussion with each individual business to review on a case by case basis if the business is practicing the same social distance requirement of other types of businesses that are enclosed, like a nail shop, but taking appointment only for the fitness studio. The fitness studio should have the same reopening time as other like businesses. None of you have lost your livelihood with no notice, even if you are a little uncomfortable with new environment we are living in. While you are stressed with what has happened, you are all stressed with income and money coming in. Take a moment and pause to think about what would happen if all of that, all of a sudden was gone through no fault of your own, then told just to wait. When you're making decisions, could you collectively look at the effect of all of these decisions and understand the people that these decisions are affecting permanently? Thank you for your consideration, and please include your response, in your response, any scientific evidence distinguishing barber shop and nail salons versus fitness studios? And this next one is from George R. Martin. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is George Martin, chairman of the George M. Martin Company on sixty seventh street. Our company has been a taxpayer and a, and a member of the Emeryville business community for over eighty years. I can't express strongly enough how proud we are to be a part of the Emeryville community. Very briefly, in these trying times, I think it's appropriate to thank the outstanding services and dedication that our Emeryville police, fire, and first responders provide to our community. In my experience, there are none better. To a person, they have always been the best professionals one could encounter. From the very top of the departments down, all true professionals. I would also like to wish Chief Tahara good luck in her retirement. Thank you all, ladies and gentlemen, sincerely, George R. Martin, and the entire ownership and workforce at the George M. Martin Company. And now the person with their raised hand may speak. Last four digits, one, two, eight, one.
Hello. I, it's, I find it very telling that you have tonight dropped the retirement celebration, or whatever it was going to be for Chief Tahara, instead moved it to a private ceremony at City Hall with the staff. All I can say about that is I can see why you did that. Chief Tahara, in, in my, my estimation of countering the previous letter writer was, is it, is it, has been a terrible chief, and I'll prove it to you right now. It's really telling that the mayor had to say, thank you for not engaging in violence to Chief Tahara over her four years here. That's a pretty low bar. I do thank her for not engaging in violence as well. I join the, the mayor in that, but that that's pretty bad, that we have to get to the point where we have, that's what we have to do. Okay, so the, the chief and the city are both now, you know, basically tripping over themselves to tell everybody how progressive they are, how progressive the EPD is, and you're telling us how proud you are of them, how wonderful they are, and about how Black Lives Matter, so says the, the Emeryville Police Department. And really? I mean, really? And that's what every chief is saying around the country right now, including ours. That is a nonstarter. Black Lives Matter started because of police brutality, and now they are desperate. They want to, you know, they're, they're afraid that they're going to get, you know, their, their departments defunded, and so this is their go to place. So it's shameful. So what has this city done? Well, in, right before Tahara, Chief Tahara took office, the city gunned down, the police department gunned down Yvette Henderson. And we know from the, the, the trial, the civil trial and the, the trial records, the reports, that, that Yvette Henderson, Ms. Henderson, was first struck on the side, and then she, she had a gun, and then that gun flew six feet behind her. And then the kill shot was administered by an AR fifteen from an Emeryville police officer when she attempted to get up, but the gun was behind her, instead of in front of her. And that's not it. That's a extradigital killing, in my opinion. The city's website says that we're, we have, the police department has a long history of minimal use of force, and if you call that a minimal use of force, you know, I think you're crazy. The state, the city has steadfastly said that the state of California is wrong about AR fifteens. The state of California has ruled AR fifteens as assault rifles. The, the City of Emeryville and the police department have said they are not assault rifles, and we've never been told how you've come to that conclusion. We have asked, how do you know they're not assault, how do you know Sacramento is wrong? The city refuses to say. There's been no debate about use of force protocols for the City of Emeryville in the wake of the shooting of Ms. Henderson. I've asked, can we have a public debate? No, we cannot, is the answer. No public debate. All we have is the, the safety committee, which meets on weekdays at ten AM when no citizens can come. And then last thing, and, and to prove how just Emeryville is, you recently, you guys have been going out of your way to tell us that you're, that the city uses the Lexipol public policy platform, the Lexipol platform. It's like, ooh, that sounds exciting and innovative, and wow, that must be wonderful. So I checked into it, and that's the policy platform used by almost every police department across the country, including Minneapolis. So the fact that you use Lexipol is cold comfort. So, I mean.
Time is up, so thank you. Briefly, I want to address the owner of the fitness center and other businesses. I don't want to go too far down this because it's not an agendized object, but the City of Emeryville is under the jurisdiction of the Alameda County Health Department, and we are following their orders. I've had a few different businesses reach out to me and talk to me about the differences between our health orders, Berkeley's health orders, the county of San Francisco, and Contra Costa County, and it makes it seemingly unfair for businesses. I have shared those concerns with the health department when I've attended those meetings, and I will do so again, but again, we are following their orders. The city itself has no policies around this. Okay. All right, so now we have the consent calendar. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make, propose amendments to one item in the minutes.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item ten point four, which is the minutes from the last regular city council meeting, there are three substantive errors in the minutes that I believe need to be amended. On page one of those minutes, under number three, the vote reads, there's two i's and one absent. The i's should say four i's, and it should include Vice Mayor Martinez and Councilmember Bouters is voting i. Their names do not appear anywhere. On page five, under item twelve point two, it says that the mayor proposed to rename sixty fifth street. It should say forty seventh street, so that needs to be changed, please. And then on page six, under item fourteen, it states that Vice Mayor Martinez asked to discuss capping fees on delivery services, but it fails to state that she received majority support. So I'd like those amendments, with those amendments to item ten point four, Mr. Mayor, I will move the consent calendar.
And with those, I will second it. Can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Bouters.
Hi.
Councilmember Donahue. You're muted, but I saw you say aye. Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
And Mayor Pats.
Aye. So there are no public hearings today, so that brings us to the action items, and I believe I said we are going to start with action item twelve point six.
Mr. Mayor, action item twelve point six, a report on civil unrest and a resolution of the city, proposed resolution of the city council approving a local business recovery program and reappropriating two hundred thousand dollars from the existing facade improvement program to that local business recovery program. We have, Chief Tahara is available to walk through the facts of the events of the weekend of May thirtieth and thirty first, and then Mr. Chad Smalley and I can answer any questions that the council may have about the proposal to reallocate the facade grant program funds. So with that, Mr. Mayor, unless there are questions of me, I would turn it over to Chief Tahara.
Great. Let's hear from, any questions of the city manager before we go to Chief Tahara? Seeing none, go ahead and have Chief Tahara.
I'm looking at my list of participants, and I don't know which of those numbers would be the chief, so let me.
Is it possibly the person named Jen?
Oh, I'm sorry, she was off my screen. Let's see if that's her. Is that you, Chief Tahara? Sharice, is there a number that ends with zero five? I'm sorry, zero four? No.
I would just note that the person who's Jen has her hand raised now.
Yes, I see that. I don't, Jen, if you can hear me, I do not have you muted on my side. I'm going to promote her, if you could hold for one moment.
Okay.
Chief, is that you? So that person is unmuted on my side. Not sure why.
So, city manager, are you able to present for her?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I will endeavor to do my best in terms of walking through the facts. And again, I just want to emphasize, this is a report that's based on the facts, the events, I should say, of May 30th and 31st without additional context. And the facts herein, the facts in this report are intended to also support the proposal to reallocate the facade grant funds to a new program and therefore provide the public purpose for that reallocation. On Friday, May 29th, as you may know from the news and also maybe your own experience, the city of Oakland experienced large demonstrations in its downtown. There were approximately 8,000 people in Oakland on the night of May 29th. Unfortunately, there was, there were fires, shootings, assaults, and additionally, their downtown experienced looting activity. On Saturday morning, here in Emeryville-
All right, this is the chief here.
Okay.
Sorry, chief, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Thank you, okay, you're on, sorry about that.
Okay, sorry. Good evening, everybody. I'll just pick up where Christine left off. And so we had a major event in Oakland on May 29th. And on early Saturday morning, we received intelligence that we were going to be targeted with large looting campaign on Saturday evening at around 7:00, and that the targets were primarily Bay Street and Target and East Bay Bridge Center. We started planning at about 8:00 a.m. on Saturday morning, and we communicated with allied agencies to gain further intelligence. So based on what we learned, we put an operations plan in place around several primary directives, and those directives were the protection of life, the protection of property, the protection of First Amendment rights, and high visible deterrence of criminal and looting activity. We anticipated that it would be a large crowd, and we determined, based on what happened in Oakland, that any effort to disperse large crowds of individuals focused on criminal behavior would have to be measured and orchestrated with a specific defined purpose, and not in a way that would further excite a riot or compromise people's lives. The use of chemical agents to disperse crowds in Emeryville was specifically reserved for rescue situations only. By 7:00 p.m., we received our first two calls of large crowds gathering at the Target parking lot. Within seconds, we were under siege by hundreds of vehicles, and an estimated, we estimated that over 1,000 individuals descended on Emeryville intent on criminal activity. As the evening wore on, crowds of individuals continued flowing into the city. Several times throughout the evening, we made requests to the county EOC for mutual aid and received mutual aid from several agencies: Oakland Police Department, California Highway Patrol, Alameda County Sheriff's Office, Berkeley Police Department, Marin County sent a squad, and we had Berkeley Police Department also. As the night unfolded, the command posts continuously took in information from the field units and evaluated how best to adjust our response to prevent loss of life, injury, and as much loss of damage and loss of property as we could. We noted as the evening progressed that the crowds were highly mobile and used vehicles to move from one location to another in the commission of criminal activity. Sites were rapidly vacated when officers arrived. We created traffic breaks, we closed intersections, we blocked vehicle access to parking lots, and that decreased access and the availability of escape routes. Officers used remarkable restraint, de-escalation strategies, and nonviolent conflict resolution practices effectively, which reduced the risk of injuries to bystanders and to officers. We did do extensive outreach during the late morning and early afternoon of May 30th to our commercial entities. We reached out by phone, by email, and in person to those who were available. We provided them information about the planned protest and what we knew, and we advised them to close up early and board up by 3:00 p.m. that day. As you know, some businesses were very good and made every effort to protect the property. The operation concluded at 3:00 a.m. on Sunday, May 31st, and we continued to see opportunistic looting after that, but at a much reduced rate. In the subsequent days, particularly the next day, we know that we were again the target, but we utilized CHP, California Highway Patrol, to block entrance to the city from the freeway. And that was in anticipation of the activity in Contra Costa County coming back to Alameda County. And I believe that was a very effective tactic in protecting us on Sunday night. The continuing strategy of maintaining high visibility of the police presence throughout the city was effective. We experienced several scouts, several car vans of cars coming through the city, both on Monday and Tuesday nights, and we were very visible throughout the city, and they did not feel comfortable staying around to carry out any crime or whatever the intent was of the visits. We continued then the strategy of high visibility and increased staffing and roadway closures until we ceased the operation on Sunday evening this week, this last Sunday. I'm very proud of our people. They demonstrated extraordinary restraint throughout the event. And as a result, we did not have any injuries and nor were any members of the community injured as a result of our response to this. If you have any further questions, I would take them, but I believe Chad has some follow-up.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just jump in and add some additional information about our actions on Sunday, additional staff responded. And thank you to all of you council members who are out there in the community helping us with the cleanup and talking to business owners and members of the public and reassuring them and providing support.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Better?
Yep.
Additionally, Public Works crews were dispatched to the retail centers, and we had obtained plywood. And there were some businesses that were unable to obtain their own plywood for boardups, and so the Public Works crews delivered plywood to them. Additionally, we were able to obtain barricades, water barrier barricades and other barricades to help the businesses barricade their parking lots and work with the police department for traffic control that day and in the following week. And then I just want to give a particular thank you to Mr. Chad Smalley, our Economic Development Manager, who made so many, many calls to businesses on Sunday, helping to assess what their needs were, what we could do for them, and sort of coordinating our efforts. And he and I were out in several parking lots for quite a while on Sunday. And so just to add on to the efforts that the police chief described, the efforts of non-s sworn staff on Sunday and the following week. Chad has continued to communicate with businesses throughout the course of this week. And as we also have, I'll just close by reminding you that this report recommends a reallocation of $200,000 of facade grant improvement funds to a local business recovery program. The proposal is to provide grants up to $4,000 to local businesses that have local gross receipts of 7.5 million or less. Of the 65 businesses that staff identified having been impacted by these activities, we estimate that about 45 of those businesses could take advantage of that program if it's approved in that fashion. And Chad is on the call as well, or in the meeting as well, to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Before we get to Chad, I want to do two things. I want to make sure that the chief is still available, so the council can ask clarifying questions, which I'd like to do. But before we move too far down that path, city manager, you mentioned the plywood and the water barriers. My understanding is a particular business was instrumental in providing those to us. Am I inaccurate in that?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for reminding me of that. Our contractor at the South Bay Front Bridge, Gelati, was very generous in helping us with providing the water barriers and I believe also offered to make plywood available if it was needed. So thank you for reminding me of that.
I don't want to drift too far away from the chief's report. Just wave at me if you have clarifying questions. Member Medina?
Hi, chief. Thank you so much for that report. I would like, if you could clarify a little bit of what happened at the GameStop, because I know many members of the community have reached out and asked about it. I'd love if you could clarify the intent of that operation was in fact to use mobile leaves inside of it.
So to clarify, because you broke up a little bit, member Medina, you're asking about if any employees were at the GameStop?
Yes, what the intent of the mission of the GameStop was, because we had a lot of community questions because of the video of that event.
Okay, I'll ask for a moment of quiet, so we don't get the echo before the chief answers.
Anybody hear me?
Yes.
Hello, I'm back. GameStop was, yes, there were two employees in that store. We did contact GameStop as late as, I believe the third time we contacted them was 5:00 that day, and asked them to close early. They chose not to, and there were two employees in that store. We told them that GameStop was specifically mentioned in a social media tweet as being a targeted store. So actually, GameStop was the flashpoint for events on Saturday night, and two employees tried to barricade themselves inside the door. And of course, they were unsuccessful in keeping the crowds out. They were immediately overwhelmed. And so that was our first incident that we had, and we were responding to that then when everything else erupted. But they were, there was an Oakland Police Department squad on site that helped get those employees out. And there was a little bit of a scuffle with those officers. Two people were detained but released. But GameStop did not then, it continued to be a target throughout the evening and even the next day.
Other clarifying questions? Okay. Chad, would you like to build on what the city manager has said?
Yes, thank you, Chad Smalley, Economic Development Housing Manager. Just to mention that my interface with the businesses out there, this, I mean, it's hard to imagine something like this happening at a worse time for some of these businesses. Many were already closed or under limited operations due to the public health orders and now face the fact of having to make repairs to storefronts, replace damaged equipment, and replace lost inventory. And right at the moment when they potentially are able to start business operations again in some limited fashion. And so we've put together this proposal as a way of bridging folks over as a rapid response program to get folks up and running again so they can best position themselves to take advantage of recovery and reduce restrictions related to the pandemic. So that's all I wanted to note on that. There's a number of businesses I've talked to that are very interested in this, and so I'm hopeful that we can move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Clarifying questions for Mr. Smalley? Mr. Bouders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have two questions, Chad. One is, is this program going to have, I'm supportive of what we're trying to do here, but just, are we going to be at risk of supplanting funds that the commercial property owners should be providing the tenants? So if a storefront was vandalized or damaged, you know, and there is an insurance policy in place with the commercial property owner, I'm just concerned that we're supplanting something that the commercial property owner should be filing an insurance claim for, for the betterment of their tenant, that they might actually have a contractual obligation to do under the lease. And then the second thing is, if it does fall to, either it's a single standalone building where the building or tenant is going to be responsible, there's no other party to subrogate them, or if they have their own insurance policy for this issue, because that's what's contractually obligated to them under their lease, will we be providing this as like the deductible payment in those cases? Would be requiring that they have some proof that they have the money to do the work, or are we simply going to be giving them cash, hoping that they're going to do it, and that even if they choose to walk away from the store? So I just don't want it to be translated into losses and have an unimproved building. I want there to be something that shows that it's actually going to be improved, and then I also just don't want to subrogate in lieu of an insurance claim that a large commercial property owner should be doing for their tenant. Could you answer those two things?
The intent of this is to be rapid response to bridge the gap towards, it takes a long time for insurance claims to be paid back. And so this is intended to get these businesses, it's intended to have very low barriers to funding, so that the funds can be dispersed quickly, potentially in advance of an insurance claim, and certainly in lieu of a deductible. Your points well taken, and we can look into designing brackets around this under circumstances that relate to whether this is the funds as intended or reopened.
I can't hear Chad, I don't know what's going on.
We could design the program to have all of the requirements that you just articulated, to require them to reopen, to require them not to use the funds for anything that their landlord should be paid for, to require them not to use these funds for purposes that the insurance company would, you know, come after in terms of a subrogation claim. We could add a lot of limitations on how they cannot use these funds, if that's something that the council wishes. We had intended, as Chad was, I think, trying to say, that this would be a rapid, fairly streamlined amount of funding to go out. Also, one of the things we included is inventory replacement and equipment replacement. We've had, one of the businesses lost some of its small medical office and lost some very expensive pieces of equipment. Not sure that the landlord would be responsible for replacing those. Of course, we can't know what the coverage of the landlord is and the nature of every lease between them, but we're certainly happy to articulate a series of limitations on how the funds can be used, if that's what the council would like.
Yeah, I'll just, thank you for those answers. I would just say, I understand the rapid nature of the response. As the former Disaster Relief Director going in, we would wait. FEMA and insurance would take a long time to come in, and we were, as the Red Cross, often the people providing that first level of assistance. You know, the, so I think putting the brackets around, I don't want to delay getting money to people, but ensuring that it goes to the things that, you know, that there's, like, either we're reimbursing a receipt, right, for something? I think that's what I want to see, as opposed to just giving someone cash who walks away. So either like proof that there's an expense-
Save that for discussion, because I think there's going to be a bigger talk. I want to focus on clarifying questions now, so that we can get all the questions answered, then come back. I don't mean to cut you off, member Bouders, but I want to save that for discussion, because I think there's some important points there. Member Medina?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify whether it would only be applicable to businesses that are specifically within the Emeryville city limits, since the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center, of course, straddles up in Oakland.
For the businesses where we benefit from the tax sharing agreement, For the businesses where we benefit from the tax sharing agreement, we had intended to provide support to the businesses that also provide support to Emeryville.
Okay.
So people within the J O A?
Correct.
Okay, other clarifying questions? Okay, before we get into discussion, and Member Bouters, I will come to you first, because I think you have some great points to make. Let's go to public comment. Sherry, do we have any comment cards on this item, or anybody with a raised hand?
I see one raised hand. There are no submitted comments online, but last wordage is one, two, eight, one.
Okay, the mayor tonight just said that no one can stand silent. And so I take that to heart. He also said, it's time for leaders to listen. So what we need to do is we need to defund the Emeryville Police Department. I went online today, I looked around at like, what is, why are police, why is there so much racism going on? I found out that I've read several academic studies, and I found out that eight, in one study, eight thousand sworn officers around the country were, were interviewed. And they, that, that study showed that police across the board think that they treat black people fairly. That's across California and the rest of the country. Police officers think that they treat black people fairly. And then they, the study also found that white cops specifically speak and think despairingly of Black Lives Matter movement, and that's a regular thing. It's a cultural affect. It's just all the time. Eighty percent of the cops in the country think that the country does not need to make changes that would, would ensure that black people have equal rights. And this, one other study also found that cops are Republican, registered Republican at a far higher rate than, you know, average Americans. So, I mean, clearly, it's, police forces in the United States are basically right-wing authoritarian locuses of power. And for you guys up here tonight, like talking about how proud you are of the E P D, it just seems like hubris to me. We need to have, you know, almost half of our budget, actually over half of our budget is not for public safety. It's like the Pentagon to the United States budget. We need to start spending money on community services. We need to start talking about defunding the Emeryville Police Department. And the fact that the, the city has stifled debate, like for instance, about the use of force protocols, and as I mentioned before. I mean, that, that's not listening. That's the opposite of listening. So, and then the Lexi Poll thing, you guys, you know, trotting that out as if that's some sort of awesome thing that's going to protect people, when in fact, it's like, it's like I said, the Minneapolis Police Department uses the same protocols. So that just seems like blind, just seems like blinkered. I don't know what you guys are thinking. So, you know, have Emeryville Police engaged in wholesale racism? Well, I've got a, I don't, we don't, we don't really know. I'm, I'm, I'm doing some public records request to find out about that. But I've got several out right now. So I'm going to find out about that. But, you know, all, I think what we can assume is Emeryville Police are like average police. There's no reason to assume that they're somehow better. They are police, and we know police are, what the six stats I just said, eighty percent of them hate Black Lives Matter. And the other stats I, I mentioned. So I just think this is like Okay.
All right. We are into discussion, and as I said, we'll come right back to Member Bouters. So thank you for your patience in this.
No problem. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I, just following up on my, my prior question, I, I think the, I'm fully supportive of what we're trying to do here, and I think the goal for, for this program should just be to, as a matter of, you know, with all the budget considerations and things going on, I just want to make sure that we don't inadvertently commit waste. And so not that that could be interpreted as giving money to a business in need is waste, but if the goal of the program, since this is originally from the facade grant program, is to improve storefronts that were damaged during this, I'm fully supportive of what we're trying to accomplish here. I just think I would ask staff to think procedurally about implementation. How do you, without making it onerous and delaying the expenditure of these funds, how do you make it possible to ensure that we're either providing money that someone doesn't have for the deductible to, to start their insurance claim, right? So we know that that's being processed. Or if that's literally, hey, I need to replace windows or merchandise, these things Chad listed, I support all of them. But we, I need to get that going. Something that is in furtherance of reopening and a commitment to that, I just want to see that there's something there or not, that somebody applies and says, I need the money, and then there's no, there's no commitment. And I just also don't want, I also don't want us to be in a place where we're, we're basically letting the large corporate property owner, some of whom, and I want to, I want to take a moment, because my first call on May thirtieth, my first text was at seven AM with the city manager and chief Tahata about the stuff circulating on social media. And I know all of us did different things over those days, and I made phone calls to the construction sites, and I spoke to construction managers about ensuring that equipment was disabled, so it couldn't be driven around city streets like we saw in Oakland the night before. So I know how much work the staff did that day. I was in touch with them, just like all of us were throughout the day. And I appreciate the police department reaching out to the commercial property owners, and as the chief very gently touched on, some, some were responsive and supportive and did the things that were suggested and asked of them, and some of them didn't. And I don't want to pick winners and losers in this program, but I just want to note that. And so I want to make sure that we don't just give cash away to large commercial property owners who may or may not keep their tenant. So I want to just make sure that we're, we're not, we're not improving someone's storefront, and then the tenant doesn't get to stay, the business doesn't stay. So I just want to make sure the businesses get to stay.
Other members' comments? Member Donahue?
Sometimes, if you're a small business, your own insurance company doesn't want to follow through, and there's a disagreement about them paying. So I think that this fund could conceivably be used to help, in that circumstance, provide an attorney for the company to enforce their own insurance company to perform. And then, you know, in theory, it could be reimbursed, and the city funds would be reimbursed. But in other words, like, we should consider that side. That is a real phenomenon with small business. I just want to say that, you know, I feel for small business. When they're down, it even gets harder to get your own insurance company sometimes to perform.
Thank you. Member Martinez?
I, I agree with Member Donahue on this one. I, I don't want to make things too onerous, and I think it would be wise to allow for folks to be able to use this as bridge funding while they are filing those claims, even if insurance is the, the final solution for either the property owner or the renter. I think an infusion of funds at this time in a quick way might be helpful to these businesses that are targeted.
Thank you. Member Medina?
Yeah, Chad, I have one more clarifying question before I get into my comments. Are there any restaurants on this list of forty-five businesses that might be eligible? Do you know?
Yes, there's a couple of vendors at the food hall that are on the list that sustained some sort of damage.
Right. I understand the nexus between the facade grant and repairing shattered storefronts. I get that. I also get that this event was a shock and very visceral in the way that it happened. We also have been on month three of a pandemic that has economically kneecapped most businesses in town. And I've had many restaurants and cafe owners also ask us about if we're going to have a small business grant for them prior to these events happening. So I, I do want to question whether or not this is the best application of these funds to limit it just for looting. And I think that's a discussion we do need to have, because the pandemic has been economically disastrous for our local restaurant and retail industry as well. And there's a lot of small businesses around town. And if we're going to limit it just to the aftermath of these specific events because of the nexus of facade grants, then I'd want to see prioritization for restaurants and for small non-chain businesses first of the line.
Thank you. I think this has been a thoughtful discussion, and I appreciate everyone's comments. I hear the concerns about double dipping. I hear the concerns about targeting these to the businesses. For me, this is about expedience in dealing with the paperwork that is out there when you have suffered a loss. We could spend a long time talking about whether or not insurance covers civil unrest. It is included in some policies and excluded in others, and gets into all sorts of other challenges. For me, what I want to see is businesses being able to reopen and removing any barriers that we have. I, any protections we can to hold large companies, property owners accountable for doing their due diligence, I appreciate. But I also think we're talking about a small, one-time infusion of cash to help replace a cash register for a restaurant, storefront for businesses that just now can do curbside pickup. And so you don't want to lose the ability to provide immediate relief to our small businesses for the fact that we have an overwhelming mountain of things in front of us to deal with, whether it be bad actors who own property, or it be the need that we're all suffering because of the, you know, we heard from business owners tonight that they still can't reopen, and there's that what they sell expires. If they don't have that hour booked, they don't ever have a chance to make that up. So their shelf life is very limited. So, again, for me, I find this to be useful as a way. And I'm going to look to the city manager. What direction do you need from us? I think we're going to vote on this, but you've had some very, if you could summarize what you need from us to be very specific in this motion.
Well, we have a resolution in your packet, and if you'd like to add any specific requirements to that, I guess we'd need to know, I, I didn't necessarily hear consensus. There were a, a number of different suggestions. So if there are specific things that you would like to add to the resolution, that's what we would need to know right now.
So is there anybody who has an add to the? You're right, I have not heard consensus. Member Bouters, then come back to Member Medina.
I don't have an add, but I, in lieu of an add, to make the resolution clean, and going off of something Councilmember Medina said, you know, I, I'm, I appreciate your, your argument in favor of expediency, Mr. Mayor, and the things I've asked, I will withdraw them as things that need to be part of the program. I will trust staff that this is thought out enough. But for me, this is a time of budget accountability. And so what I would like to ask as a direction to staff, but in lieu of being a requirement in the motion, is that we ask every applicant what they're going to use it for, and how, what was the total cost of the thing they need to replace or repair? So in other words, if we're giving four thousand dollars, and they're like, I need this four thousand dollars for this sixty thousand dollar thing, and then I would like staff to come back in six months and tell us what the outcome of each of these things was, because A, this would be instructive as to future programs like this, and B, to Councilmember Medina's point, I don't want other businesses that aren't impacted by this very urgent thing that we need to deal with, who have been looking for other types of relief that some of us have been trying to advocate for. I don't want that to be lost. I want, I want there to be some accountability to that. So I, that puts it on staff to design this program and make it accountable in a way that we can at least see, see what, what we spent the money on. That's what I would ask.
Thank you. Member Medina? You're on mute.
Yeah, I would support that. I would, I would support Councilmember Bouters's commitment to reopen, being put into the ordinance. I think the entire point of using our economic development money is to invest this in the hopes that we're going to get this back in terms of sales tax, to be completely frank about it, right? And so I think we need to be upfront about the fact that we expect businesses to receive these funds to commit to reopen. I think that was a really good add, Mr. Bouters, and I would support putting this on here.
Before I look for a motion, Member Donahue, Member Martinez's thoughts? Nice, Member Martinez, nice, Member Don, or Member Donahue, okay. That was going to be my one add as well. So, Member Bouters, if you'd like to make the motion with that one addition, that there's a commitment from businesses to reopen? Is that clarified enough for you, City Manager?
May I just a clarifying question? Given that part of what we've talked about is they may or may not ultimately be able to get insurance or replace all of their inventory, is the council's intent that if they ultimately fail to reopen for a variety of different reasons, that we would be going after them to return those funds to the city of Emeryville?
My concern is the amount is almost not worth going after. The cost to reclaim those funds.
But if it was fifty of them, or thirty of them, sorry.
That's
Yeah, no, I, I
So perhaps what we can do is include that in the report back, and do sort of a, like a two-month and then a four-month report back, so that we can assess whether that's something, an action that the council would want us to take at that point.
Can we just put into the, into the resolution and as part of the agreement we give when we give the grant, that there's a line that simply says, by accepting this, I commit that I'm, I'm working to reopen, and should I not reopen, I understand that the city of Emeryville may seek to have the money returned. So that that way, we don't have to do, to the mayor's point, we don't have to do anything if it's not, if there's a couple of these that fail for other reasons or whatever, we can let it go. But if we systemically lose two hundred thousand dollars over this, then we can decide we want to do something about it. We've protected ourselves on paper. Does that make sense to folks?
Yes.
It, yeah, I think we're going to see a good faith effort from our, from our small businesses in town to reopen and use this money wisely. So I think they'll be fine with that language, and I support it. With that, will you care to make a motion, Member Bouters?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to just look here on the resolution for where to add the one piece that the, my colleague mentioned. I, I will make a motion to approve the resolution, and I would like to
The second resolved, I think.
Yeah, I was looking at that, too. I would like to amend the second resolved after, it says by submitting evidence of loss in a W nine. And then I would like to just put comma, and by providing written test, testament, or written
Commitment.
Written, a written commitment to reopening, reopening business within the city, and then continue with semicolon and be further. So I'll make a motion with that amendment.
I will second, I'm going to go to Member Medina for a second on that, because I feel like this came out of her suggestion.
I'll back up.
Okay, and before I take the vote, I want to make sure Mr. Geena, just because I haven't called your name yet, is on board with this.
It's fine, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. And with that, city clerk, if you will take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bouters?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Patz?
Aye, and I want to thank my council members, and this is a very small thing, but it's something I think that'll be important to some of our smaller businesses. So thank you for that. Okay, that brings us to item twelve point one. The mid-cycle review for the budget. Speaking of fiscal issues.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have before you tonight a budget amendments for this current fiscal year and also next fiscal year. We made a significant presentation at the council as part of a study session on May nineteenth, I believe it was, and had an extensive presentation for you that evening. Our finance director, Ms. Shay, has a somewhat summarized presentation for you tonight, which may or may not make the screen. We'll see. There we go. That's the end. But I do want to just remind you that this is a very different situation than we were in when we first came to you with the mid-cycle amendments in March. And as I noted, we noted in the report, you wisely chose to accept and file that report and not take action on it. We have now, since that time, we are three months into the COVID nineteen pandemic shutdown here. We've had, as Councilmember Medina was referring to just a minute ago, significant negative impacts on all our entire business community here in Emeryville, of course, the overall regional economy as well, if not the national and global economy. For Emeryville, our unique circumstance is that our revenues are primarily result from sales tax, hotel tax, and business license tax. All three of those have suffered the economic shock of this pandemic. So I will turn it over to Ms. Shay to walk you through our budget presentation, but I want to end with one other statement of emphasis, which is that this is, what's before you tonight is a bridging strategy to buy us time to assess whether, what this economic recovery will look like and how long it will take. We are proposing to use one-time funds to cover the budget, the revenue shortfalls that are resulting from this economic shock. And they are one-time funds. If we do not see a sufficient recovery by the If we do not see a sufficient recovery by the holidays, we will be having very different conversations. So with that, we will be committing to coming back to you in September with another budget update. Um, because we think we need to have much more frequent conversations with you about the budget as we move into the next fiscal year, so with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Shea to walk through the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. For your consideration tonight, it's the revised budget for fiscal years two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, uh, next slide please. The COVID nineteen pandemic created economic impulsion and has negative impacts on business and the city's revenues. The city's sales tax, hotel tax, business license tax, and current tax um are significantly impacted. This major revenue source represents about, uh, represent about sixty percent of the general fund revenue, next slide please. The projected loss to the general fund revenue is a fifteen point two million uh over a two-year period. With six point eight million in fiscal year two thousand twenty and eight point four million in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Next slide please. Um, this slide recaps the budget balancing strategies that were presented to the city council at the May study session. The budget proposed to use a short-term bridging strategies to balance the budget. This will allow the city time to uh assess the strength of the economic recovery and implement other strategies if necessary. The revenue strategies include the use of one-time residential and commercial property transfer tax. Um, use of capital project money, uh, draw down funds from pension reserves. And contribution uh from the workers' compensation fund. The expenditure strategies include uh cancellation of general fund contributions to the pension reserve fund and the litigation fund. And hiring freeze for six-way compositions, next slide please. This slide presents the budget amendments uh for the general fund and other funds. General fund revenues are expected to decrease by one point four million uh in fiscal year two thousand twenty and one point one million in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. General fund expenditures are expected to decrease by one point two million in fiscal year two thousand twenty and nine hundred thousand in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. In terms of other funds, uh, revenues are expected to increase by two point five million in fiscal year two thousand twenty. And reduced by seven hundred thousand in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Expenditures are expected to increase by seven hundred thousand in fiscal year two thousand twenty and six million in fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. The uh increase in revenue in the current fiscal year is mainly due to the projected increase in um. Commercial transfer tax revenue, the six million increase in expenditures in uh fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Uh, it's um related to transfer to the general fund to help uh balance the budget, next slide please. This slide provides more information about the general fund budget. Uh, it presents the adopted budget, the proposed adjustment and the revised budget. Fiscal year two thousand twenty, uh, general fund budget will be amended from almost forty-five million to forty-three million. Uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, uh, general fund budget will be amended from forty-six million to forty-five million. Uh, the city achieve a balanced the two-year budget, uh, next slide please. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the amended budget for the two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one fiscal years, uh fiscal years. Uh, staff will be providing a quarterly budget updates uh to the city council starting in September. The budget updates will uh reflect more current financial data. Um, I want to advise the city council that the financial impacts of civil unrest are still being assessed. And staff will provide more information to the city council in the next budget update, uh, this concludes my presentation, any questions?
Sorry, I cannot see everybody with a shared screen, so I'm scrolling through, were there any questions? You may have to raise your hand again. Seeing none. We will go to. Public comment and then discussions, can you unshare the screen so I can? Have a better visual and not have to scroll through people, thank you. So Sheri, any public comment cards or anybody with a raised hand?
I do have one um submitted comment card.
Okay.
This comment is from Miro Desai. Good evening, Mayor Pats and council members, speaking my capacity as SEIU Emeryville Chapter President. I would like to thank Susan Shea and the city manager on their efforts to arrive at a suitable budget adjustment proposal. In these extraordinarily challenging times, the proposed adjustments are appropriate and we encourage you to pass the item, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the end of public comments, we will go to council discussion. And just wave at me if you'd like to speak first. Okay, wave at me if you'd like to speak at all, Member Bauders, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I didn't need to go first, but um, yeah, as Chair of the Budget Committee and as the liaison to the Budget. Advisory Committee, I just really want to thank staff, um, I want to echo what uh Maru Desai just said and thank the city manager in particular. Uh, for working so closely with these committees and myself and Vice Mayor Martinez. Um, on analyzing how to um make changes. In this very complicated and difficult time economically, um, that prioritize uh people. And that is going to become a harder and harder thing to do. Um, you know, depending on what comes next in twenty twenty, I don't know. Um, you know, twenty twenty is just the, the year of challenges, uh, but. We have weathered them well um with this proposal, um, as, you know, as was provided up through. On the committee meetings in May, um, and so I just want to echo that and, and say that we've, we've. Engaged in very good budget practices and policies, and although we are suspending some of them by taking this action tonight. That is the prudent and reasonable thing to do here, um, in order to promote the fiscal. Uh, longevity of the city through this crisis and hopefully bridge us to the other side, so I want to thank the city manager and the finance director. For that work and then all the committee members, um, who have been part of that conversation for the last two months.
Thank you. Anybody else likes to comment? No, I want to em- echo what uh Maru and Member Bauders have said. Um, this is really a rabbit out of the hat kind of moment. The fiscal crisis is not coming, it is, it is here, it is going to be bad. While I am hopeful this turns around, I think we're gonna be having some very difficult conversations over. The next period of time, and I just, I'm really impressed with the work that Susan has done, the city manager has done and her whole team. Thank you for that work. And with that, um, Member Bauders, because you're on the, uh, Member Mar- uh Vice Mayor Martinez, because you're on the Budget Committee, I'm gonna look to you to make a motion.
I will um move to accept the um budget amendments and is there a resolution or? That goes along with this?
Vice Mayor, we actually need approval of the, of this one, um, so there is a resolution, so if you could uh ask for approval of the resolution, that would be.
Move the resolution.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Perfect. Uh, with that, we have a vote.
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, thank you, okay. Twelve point two, resolution, city of Emeryville adopting the appropriations limit. Do we need a presentation on this?
Yes, one moment, please.
Presentation? And we will go to public comment. Sheri?
Um, there is a presentation, I'm loading it right now.
No, we're skipping that.
Oh, I beg your pardon, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
We, we just want a co- public comment.
Okay. I do not, I do not have any public comments.
Excellent, okay.
Just so the city manager knows, every time you've spoken, you've been on mute and you keep hitting off mute, but you're now off mute.
For a moment there, my egocentrism, I thought you were talking to me and I'm like, I haven't put it on mute. Um, so with that, uh, we have discussion and or a motion. Sorry, I'm not even looking at what we're looking at here, this is the resolution, yeah.
Is there any, just to check, is there any public comment, Mr. Mayor?
There was no public comment, we did that.
I thought I saw a hand, sorry.
Nope. Okay, so I'll go back in the same order, Member Vice Mayor Martinez, would you like to move approv- move approval of this resolution?
Remove approval of the resolution.
And Member Bauders, because you're on the Budget Committee, would you like to second it?
I would like to offer one of my colleagues the opportunity to second a motion.
I'll second it.
There you go.
Member Donahue, I'm trying to be expedient here, okay, I have a motion in a second, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Bauders?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye, thank you for that, we have budgets. That brings us to item twelve point three, which is twelve point three one and twelve point three two. So, uh. Sorry, I'm switching between my agenda, these are the urgency ordinances and. We will go for presentation, or do we feel comfortable with these? I'm getting no feedback from anybody.
Okay, I, I feel comfortable assuming that Mr. Gina has reviewed all of this carefully.
Yeah, I feel like we've talked about these urgency ordinances. Um, so is everybody comfortable with going into public comment in the discussion? Member Bauders, you want a presentation or do you want to?
I, I would just like to ask if the city attorney could just cover sections five and six because um I think. Given all the things that have happened in the last two weeks, it's possible that there are some people in the community who aren't aware that we discussed this or. Haven't been able to follow it, and I think as a matter of transparency, if he covered at least the, just the high level purpose and then parts five and six. Um, briefly, that would be really helpful.
Sure. Um, thank you, uh, council member, so um Assistant City Attorney Andrea Visfitchara uh was um going to do the presentation on this. Andrea, are you prepared to respond to the council member?
Yes, I'm here if you can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, so at a very high level, uh, there's two ordinances being proposed, one is an urgency ordinance. And one is a regular ordinance, and what these ordinances would require. Is require landlords to provide a repayment plan to restaurants. Um, that have been impacted by the COVID nineteen emergency. And really, this is the second uh step in preserving the city's economic infrastructure, the first step. Would have been uh the imposition of the city moratorium where uh. Uh landlords could not evict uh certain uh businesses for failure to pay rent, those businesses had to have gross receipts below. Uh, seven point five million. Um. And here, this ordinance would now allow those businesses, specifically restaurants, to. Uh, repay the rent that was not paid during the city moratorium. And so uh with respect to Councilmember Bauders uh comments about wanting to go over section five and section six of the ordinances. Um. The section five would require the landlord to deliver notice to all of its restaurants. A copy of the urgency ordinance, and we just said that it should go to all the restaurants. Because landlord may not know who's gonna qualify for this assistance and who won't, so it just needs to go, it has to go within fifteen days. Of the urgency ordinance being passed, and so fifteen days from tonight would be June twenty-fourth. Um, so the landlords would have to deliver a copy of this notice and then. Um, they would have to offer a reasonable repayment plan. And what would constitute a reasonable repayment plan is that they would. The rent to be repaid could be paid back in twelve monthly installments. There is a provision where uh the rent could increase over time to allow a business. To get up to speed, however, there are some taps on that amount. Um, to prevent a landlord from uh doing a balloon payment uh on the tenant. And then also, um. During this time, the landlord could not raise additional rent, so. What it is, is that the repayment plan would be for base rent, and base rent is defined as your. Minimum rent that's due under the lease, and then additional rent is everything else, additional rent includes things like your payment of. Property taxes, utilities, um, charges to maintain common areas. So, uh, a landlord would not be able to. Increase the additional rent as a way to try and um get back that base rent that is part of. Uh, the repayment plan. Um. And then section six uh deals with prohibited landlord conduct. And that basically um. Says that the landlord hi- is prohibited from uh increasing the additional rent under the lease. Or increasing any base rent or additional rent in a renewal lease with the affected commercial tenant. In an effort to recover the unpaid base rent, um, there is a rebuttable presumption that any increase in base rent. Or additional rent during the term of the repayment plan violates this section. Unless the increase in rent is based on objective criteria set forth in the terms and conditions of a written lease. So for example, if the additional rent is meant to go up on August first. Uh, by CPI adjustment, that could go ahead and increase, but if. Uh, the landlord all of a sudden just increased it by ten percent because a renewal was coming up. Um, the presumption is that would be an effort to recover the base rent. So, that is, um, I believe the summary that Councilmember Bauders has requested, if there's. Any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Um, Bauders?
Just to confirm, Andrea, for everybody, that this creates a private right of action for landlord or a tenant.
That is correct, it's envisioned that it will be enforced um through the private party.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Member Medina?
Um, hey Andrea, thank you so much for that report, I was wondering, in terms of the effective commercial tenant. Is this limited specifically to restaurants or can this also encompass bars and cafes?
Uh, so the current proposed ordinance is limited to restaurants and. The reasons why, one of the reasons why it's limited to restaurants, um, is because restaurants provide food. And what we've learned in this pandemic that it's important to um. Preserve the diversity in food distribution as, you know, a grocery store might need, might need to close down because. They have to do additional cleaning, do an in- to infected worker, you could still get restaurant delivery, we also have the state program. Um, which is to support restaurants and to en- ensure that those um that are at high risk for COVID nineteen. Complications can shelter in place and receive food, so for that reason, it's been limited to restaurants. Um, for the proposed ordinance.
Okay, but the logic of liquor stores being an essential business doesn't extend to bars in the same way?
Um. The council is free to make those findings, um, as to. How um. The preservation of liquor stores um furthers whatever uh policy the city council is looking to further, which. The policies so far identified have been uh preservation of economic infrastructure and delivery of food.
Thank you, any other clarifying questions? Okay, we'll go to public comments here.
Just checking, I've received no online comment cards and I do see one raised hand. Last four digits, four, one, eight, six. Go ahead, please.
Hi, am I, hello, am I allowed to speak, I'm from four, one, eight, six?
Yes, you're speak, you're being heard and timed.
Yes, so I'm one of the small businesses that are um considered, it's not a cafe or restaurant. So I would not be protected by the new ordinance, which means um my landlord would essentially um. Take possession of the property, which they have full intention to do after um the end of June thirtieth. So I just ask that there's any sort of way that there could be some consideration for other businesses. I know that you're trying to do the best you can to make it fair, but my comment is, if you do have anything. Left or any budget to make another ordinance that you consider other businesses, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Not at this time.
Okay, discussion. Member Donahue?
I think that, uh, we should go ahead and pass this, is what I think, and maybe discuss other businesses in the future.
Thank you. Member Medina?
I understand that this is predicated on a legal justification. That is what protects us to extend this to restaurants and not to other bars. I get that. I do agree with Member Donahue that we have other sorts of establishments in town. We still need to creatively look to keep, um, locally. So I'm really happy to support this ordinance as is. And I want to thank, um, the City Attorney's Office, the City Manager's Office, and Councilmember Bowers for extensively working on this. Um, you know, always we're going to push forward and work to protect those businesses as well. Thank you everyone for your time on that.
Thank you. Member Bowers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to also thank the, in particular, the City Attorney's Office, Chad Smalley and the City Manager, um, as well as Councilmember Medina. Um, I also want to thank the many restaurants. I spoke to, um, on Zoom and by phone, um, over a dozen food establishments in the city about, um, the various types of provisions and situations they're facing in their lease. And to the public comment speaker, um, and to Councilmember Donahue's comments, I agree that we need to, we've been kind of incrementally moving forward, um, in, in finding ways to protect our community. We've passed, uh, some of the most comprehensive tenant protections. Um, we, you know, when I raised this, uh, last month about trying to protect the food service industry, um, I think the city attorney is right. I, I did privately behind the scenes fight very hard for bars, trust me. And it's not that the City Attorney's Office doesn't like bars or want to protect them, but they're looking out for the legal standing for this ordinance to make sure it's, um, defensible. And, um, with the current status of the governor's orders and the county health orders and the reasons they give for which businesses, um, can be open and are essential and the definitions around that, um, those are really some of those, um, those are the limiting factors we're working with it. And so we, we really wanted to make sure this didn't become invalidated. And in order to do that, we had to limit it to, um, food service in this case. But I, I support the other council colleagues of mine who have said we should be looking for ways to help these other businesses. Um, but tonight I'm very proud to support, um, an ordinance that I think will go a long way to helping, um, restaurants in the city.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be supporting both of these ordinances. And I, I want to thank, uh, Members Bowers and Medina for, um, keeping such a close connection with our restaurant community. Um, and just to reiterate what others have said, that we'll, we'll continue to take action to support all of our, um, small businesses in Emeryville in the wake of COVID nineteen and, um, civil unrest.
You know, again, I just want to thank staff and the rest of the council for their work on this. I appreciate it. I think it's really important. Um, and I, I, we will find ways to help as many businesses as we can. We have to do this, um, in the right way. And so with that, I will make a motion to read by title only.
Second?
Okay.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. And, uh, to clarify, Mr. Mayor, this is to read by title only as to the urgency ordinance.
Correct.
Um, thank you. Um, an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville to require landlords to provide a repayment plan for rent in arrears to commercial food establishments impacted by COVID nineteen emergency with secret determination of exempt pursuant to California Public Resources Code, Section two, one, zero, eight, zero, sub B four and State Sequel Guidelines, one, five, two, six, nine, sub C, and one, five, zero, six, one, sub B three.
Thank you. And I'll solicit a motion for this item?
I'll move to approve the ordinance, the urgency ordinance.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion from Member Bowers, a second from Member Medina.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez? And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay. I will also move to read the ordinance by title only. Can I get a second?
Second, the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second to read the ordinance by?
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville to require landlords to provide a repayment plan for rent in arrears to commercial food establishments impacted by COVID nineteen emergency with a secret determination of exempt pursuant to California Public Resources Code, Section two, one, zero, eight, zero, sub B four and State Sequel Guidelines, one, five, two, six, nine, sub C, and one, five, zero, six, one, sub B three.
Great. And I'll look for a motion for the item?
I move.
And?
Second?
Okay, I have a motion from Member Medina, a second from Member Bowers, from Member Donahue, sorry.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay. And so that brings us to item twelve point four, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, I think we can waive presentation on this item.
Okay. We'll take public, is everybody in agreement with that? Yes, okay, great. Public comment on this item?
I have no online comment cards and I see no raised hands.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to, uh, read by, I'm sorry, do we have discussion on these items? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to read both by title only. Is that possible, or do we have to do two votes?
Um, I'd like two votes if that's possible, Mayor.
Oh, yes. You just made it possible. All right, I will move. I will move, we read by title only for the urgency ordinance?
Second?
All right, vote please. That was Member Medina seconding.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, can I get a motion on this ordinance?
So if I may read by title only?
All right, now you're pushing it. Go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. Um, an urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending section five dash zero, five dash forty point zero three, sub E one L, I'm sorry, I, um, of the Emeryville Municipal Code, which requires landlords to provide a repayment plan for rent in arrears to residential tenants impacted by the COVID nineteen emergency with a secret determination of exempt pursuant to California Public Resources Code, Section two, one, zero, eight, zero, sub B four and State Sequel Guidelines, one, five, two, six, nine, C, and one, five, zero, six, one, sub B three.
Thank you. And a motion for the urgency ordinance?
So, mayor?
Okay, it was a motion from Member Medina, a second from Member Donahue.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. That brings us to twelve point four point two. I'm going to make a motion to read by title only. For the ordinance. Okay, I have a motion and a second on read by title only, and I will actually have to happen this time.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Uh, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending section five dash forty point zero three, sub E one I of the Emeryville Municipal Code, which requires landlords to provide a repayment plan for rent in arrears to residential tenants impacted by the COVID nineteen emergency with a secret determination of exempt pursuant to California Resources Code, Section two, one, zero, eight, zero, sub B four and State Sequel Guidelines, one, five, two, six, nine, sub C, and one, five, zero, six, one, sub B three.
Thank you. A motion on the ordinance itself?
So, mayor?
I have a motion in a second from, you can decide between Vice Mayor and Ms. Medina.
Councilmember Bowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Okay. So before we enter, move on to twelve point five, which is the, um, introduction of our interim chief, the teacher in me needs to say to Mr. Batters, did you bring enough for everybody?
Yes, if you want to break COVID rules and come to my house, I will be eating my corn on the cob in a moment.
Okay. Um, City Manager, I'm sorry, I needed a moment to laugh because it has been a rough few, well, seems like a decade, but I think a couple of weeks. I will let you do the honors.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight we have before you a resolution to appoint an interim chief of police. Um, as you know, and as we talked about a little bit earlier this evening, our chief, Jennifer Tahada, announced her retirement, um, just about a month ago. Her last day is this Friday, June twelfth, after twenty-five years of service to the community, uh, many communities and five, almost five years of service to the City of Emeryville. Uh, we were very fortunate to locate, um, an extremely qualified, uh, retired chief of police. His name is Robert Schreter, Robert Hank Schreter. Um, most recently was the chief of police in the City of Santa Rosa, retired in twenty nineteen after twenty-eight years of service to the City of Santa Rosa, working his way up through that department. His last five years were with, as chief. Um, he started his career with the City of Fullerton, where he served for three years in that department. Um, we have spoken to many people, um, done a background investigation. Um, he is very well respected. He led his department and his community through the horrible fires there in twenty seventeen. I'm sure that's not what Chief Schreter wants to be known for, because he has done so much more for that department. But that was, um, a, a major crisis for that community and he, his leadership stood out. We are required by the rules of the California Public Employees Retirement System to bring his confirmation to you for council action. As a retired annuitant, the council needs to confirm that he will not be receiving any other benefits other than his hourly rate. Um, and all of that is set forth in the resolution that is before you. Um, subject to the council, if, if council chooses to confirm him tonight, he will start work for the City of Emeryville on Saturday. The mayor and the vice mayor were kind enough to participate in the Zoom interview, uh, with Chief Schreter earlier um, and can reflect on that if you have questions of them. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And Chief Schreter is also with us tonight, um, on the call, on the, the meeting.
So, I think what would be best is if we, uh, had the interim chief introduce himself and say a few things. And then we'll go to public comment. And then I think we collectively can ask questions. We're of a clarifying nation. I think there'll be more of a discussion in nature. So if everybody's okay with that, that is how I'd like to proceed. And with that, I don't know, you're not Chief Schreter yet, so I don't know how to properly introduce you or ask you to speak. So I'm just going to stumble around until you start talking.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm assuming you can hear me at this point?
We can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, come to Emeryville. And I've met many of the members of the department already. Uh, it's been, uh, well, currently, it certainly when we started talking about this, um, there were challenges, but there are certainly more challenges even now. And things that, quite frankly, even as an interim, that you might think that you're there in order to kind of identify problems. I think there's going to be some very, uh, difficult decisions that need to be made much sooner as we move through processes. So I do appreciate the opportunity to, uh, help with the Emeryville community and the Emeryville Police Department. So I look forward to that opportunity. Any questions for me?
Um, I'm going to ask that, that we hold off and let the public comment really quickly, and then we'll come back and have a that is okay. So Sherri, do we have any members of the public wishing to address?
We have, we have no online cards and I don't see any raised hands.
Excellent. So, um, I think we'll just go in alphabetical order, because I think we all probably and the vice mayor uh, Member Bowers, on that wrote, you're up first. I really just wanted to catch you while you're eating.
Yeah, you almost caught me putting spikes in my corn on the cob. Um, I just want to welcome, uh, you, uh, Chief Schreter to the City of Emeryville. And as you noted, it's a difficult time and, um, you know, I'm not going, I, I trust the mayor and the vice mayor and the, the time they spent talking to you. So I don't feel like there's any, um, urgency for me to ask questions of an interim chief at, at this time. But I just want to ask you to stay on the meeting for future agenda items, because I know some of us are going to be proposing things, um, related to police work. And it would just be great for you to hear, hear that conversation, um, to the extent that it's a conversation about putting things on the agenda so that, um, our time together can be as productive as possible, but welcome.
Thank you, council member.
Member Donahue?
Yes, thank you for taking on this work at this challenging time. And, uh, you seem to have an open and good attitude about it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Medina?
Welcome to Emeryville, and I look forward to working with you as our interim chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I really, uh, thank and trust the process that staff went through um, in vetting Chief Schreter. And I am grateful for the opportunity to talk to Chief Schreter on, uh, May twenty-seventh, which was just three days before Emeryville, um, faced, you know, social unrest and property damage that we've, we've never seen before. So, um, I'm grateful, um, that we have someone with your leadership abilities, uh, coming into the city at this time um, and, and, um, helping us through, um, these, uh, the new lens that we're going to wear um, when we look at law enforcement in, um, in twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
So I will say welcome aboard. I am glad to hear you're ready to step right in. I know we had the conversation while before things impacted Emeryville. We did have a good conversation about the challenges that are facing our nation in general. And I, I do want to say a big thank you to the City Manager. This was hap, this was done very quickly, and I know the proper vetting was done. And so I look forward to working with you, and I look forward to working on the things we're going to talk about shortly. Any last? Oh, we need to move. I need a motion to approve the contract, which I'm going to make. I'm going to go to Member Vice Mayor Martinez for a second.
I will, uh, make the second, but since we, um, since we moved, uh, the recognition of Chief Tahada to, um, a private meeting with staff, I just wanted to take one second also, um, thank outgoing Chief Tahada for, for the work that, um, she's done in our community and, and the leadership she's shown. And, um, just really her tenor, um, with our community. I, I appreciate her very much.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we have a motion in a second to approve.
Councilmember Bowers?
With the thank you to Chief Tahada, I'm an aye.
Councilmember Donahue?
Yes, thank you, Chief Tahada. Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And Mayor Pats?
Aye. Nicely done, council. Thank you. Okay, that brings us, that was our last item, I believe. So that brings us to department head reports?
I'm going to unmute, uh, Mr. Bryant's phone, and hopefully we don't get a feedback loop, so bear with me. Charlie, are you there?
Uh, Mayor Pats? Yes, I'm right here.
Okay, good.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
We can.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Pats and members of the City Council, this is my monthly report to you on the recent Planning Commission actions. Uh, the commission's last meeting was on May twenty-eighth, and they had two items on the agenda, which are both listed on your agenda. They were both study sessions on the Art Center and also on the Affordable Housing Project at thirty-six hundred San Pablo Avenue, called the San Pablo Affordable Apartments. They had a lengthy and robust discussion about both of these items, uh, which will be coming back to the commission in the future. And I do have a question for the City Council about the thirty-six hundred San Pablo Avenue project. Uh, as you may know, that project is being processed under SB thirty-five. And as such, it's subject to what's called a streamlined ministerial approval process. So not ordinarily, uh, even be coming to the Planning Commission or the City Council for review. Uh, however, the, uh, development loan agreement that we have with the developer, RCD, does require that they hold two, um, study sessions with the Planning Commission. And the first one was this one they just had on May twenty-eighth. The second one is scheduled for July twenty-third. The loan agreement also says they will have a study session with the City Council if requested. So my question to you is, do you want to request a study session on this project? And if you do, we have it tentatively scheduled for September 1st. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions and I would appreciate answer to that question of whether you want a study session on 3600 San Pablo.
Thank you. Questions? And if you also give an answer to whether or not you want a study session? Okay, one hand up first. Go ahead, member bowders. Is this a question?
I have, I have no questions for you, Charlie, and I am very grateful for SB 35 and the way it makes these things efficient. That being said, I, I think I, I've already, I don't know how everyone else has, but I, I've spoken to the folks at RCD. I'm very excited to have them coming in and doing this project. And I, I think they know that we are too, and the city has a great history. We're not by asking for a study session, I don't think they should be worried that we're doing it to try to find reasons to punch hole in the project. We'd be doing it to just help it be a better blend with our community. So I would be interested in it just to help, help, you know, raise, raise the bar on it, but that's all.
Okay, anybody else interested in the study session? Just raise a hand or nod. Okay, you have consensus for a study session. Any other questions of Charlie? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. All right, that brings us to future agenda items unless there's any other department reports. I don't think there are. So I think as I said, when I was talking about in member announcements that I would like to hold a, I don't want to call it a town hall or roundtable, I don't know, but a special study session. But I think it's important to hear from you guys first what it is that's on your mind for future agenda items. So just wave at me if you have one. Member Medina?
Sure. Thank you so much. So I'd like to ask that we have a future agenda item to discuss an annual report from the police department regarding use of force, trainings and policies to further accountability and transparency. Mayor, you mentioned a study session. Perhaps we could fold this discussion into that.
Excellent. Was that your item or?
I have another one.
Yes, please.
I would also like the city to prepare a letter to send to the employment development department demanding a way for people without internet access to file for unemployment. I have several strongly worded drafts.
I support that one. And I saw a snap, so we have at least three for that to be a future agenda item.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
Okay. Other agenda items? Member bowders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm all down for your EDD letter. I think we're all, I'm, I'm all in for that. That got me, that got me riled up. I do have one for your, I think you're really a good acknowledgement, Mr. Mayor, at the beginning of this meeting. I really appreciate your words and your interest and commitment to having a more robust community discussion about some of these topics that are challenging. But as I've always said in my line of work on criminal justice reform, it's uncomfortable conversations that actually reach justice. So mine, mine is, I would like to have a discussion publicly. And I've been having these discussions and I want to really give a shout out to both Chief Tahada and the representatives of the Emeryville Police Officers Association. Were meeting with me in the past week and staff who have been a sounding board for some of my ideas around the city adopting a regulation or an ordinance on less lethal devices. Less lethal devices include chemical devices such as tear gas and pepper spray. They include kinetic devices such as rubber bullets, beanbag shot and plastic ammunitions that are used to not kill, but to have other types of physical deterrent to conduct. And they, the last is diversionary devices, which are things like flashback bangs, stun grenades and air ring foils. And I think the, this is not, my comments are not an indictment or a suggestion that in any way the Emeryville Police Department has misused or misappropriated them. But as we, we all know in our positions, we're here today. We don't know who will be here tomorrow. We've obviously found things that people from yesteryear could have done better. And we don't know what the future of policing will be so much as changed in 10 to 30 days as you yourself noted, Mr. Mayor. And so I would just like to ask, I'm, I'm going to be continuing those conversations. I would like to ask that we have a discussion about the potential for regulating the time use and purposes of those in our city.
Excellent. I'll look for support from others, but I have a comment on that. So, okay. My support for that will give us at least three, and I'm sure Scott and Diana are on board. And city manager, this is to you on that. I fully support that conversation. But I would like you to make sure that when we have it, that we're prepared to discuss mutual aid as well during that conversation. Because a lot of our unique situations, it is not EPD that gets involved. We rely on our neighbors and while we have some very positive partnerships there, it, it is very important to me that we have that clarified, particularly I have I have been across the street from a flash grenade being used by OPD in Emeryville. So if we're going to have that conversation, it needs to be real.
And that's, that's great, Mr. Mayor. And that's part of the conversations I've been having. So I fully support your request to include that.
Yeah. So as well, and, and again, yeah. So, and are people supportive of my idea of us having a special study session to address these comments and to maybe invite a couple of speakers in? And I will work with the city manager on that. I wish we could do it in person because I, we call them the difficult conversations in special, in education and the uncomfortable conversations are best done face to face. And while this does a good approximation, there's a reason that we as a social entity, animal need that
Yes.
as well.
I support that and I'd like to make a comment.
Please.
Years ago, like five years ago, when we did a extensive review of use of force, I asked Mr. Geena, well, can we have an Emeryville specific use of force? And he said, yes. But he also said, we have all these agreements with our surrounding departments for mutual aid. And I appreciate you bringing that up because there are certain things about it that will matter and maybe we need to really look at what the surrounding cities who we rely on are considering. Because you know, there, to train and not have our people doing the same thing as our surrounding cities could be a problem. I recognize that. It could be all kinds of issues about that, but we could coordinate perhaps beforehand, you know, in, in our study, get information beforehand that will inform our study and discussion.
Thank you. I think that's really important. And I think we won't I don't think we will be able to answer all the questions and address all the needs in one special study session. But as I said earlier, this will form the basis as, and thank you for making sure the chief stuck around. It will form the basis of what his tenure is, of how our public safety meetings go, look going forward and what we hand off to our incoming, our, our soon to be hired chief. And on that note, I want to make one more last comment before I adjourn the meeting. Which is, we are beginning search process and the city manager and the city staff will be reaching out to the community to talk about what we want to see in a new chief. We want to get community input on that and community participation and along the whole hiring process. Because I think that as good as the policies we have, one of Chief Tahada's strengths is modeling some of them and making them part of her everyday vocabulary. And I want to make sure we build upon that and continue going forward with those things. With that, I have nine thirteen. And without further objection, we are adjourned.